Good evening, ladies, gentlemen, everyone, fellow citizens. Welcome to the October 11th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
That's you.
That's, well, I'll call you or you can call yourselves. Jared Chadwick is here, Ron Bessie is here, Tricia Wirths is here, Mr. Slaven is here. I'm going to make a motion to move this along pretty quickly. We have a full night tonight. Unfortunately, Ms. Whiteside is still not with us. So I make a motion to appoint Mr. Slaven as chairman pro tem for this meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, votes, everyone who votes yes, say aye or raise your hand.
You have to call each one out separately.
Okay, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Okay, Alan, it's yours.
Thank you. Bob, if you could bring in Indiana Troop would like to have him lead us the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can find him.
I'm hoping he's there. We actually started a few minutes early.
I just talked to him, he should be in there. Indiana, you're in there, can you just raise your hand?
No, I don't see him there. Okay. Well. It's just seven o'clock now, by the way. We'll give it another minute, people. See if he comes in or not.
There he is, he's in.
Okay, Bob, could you let him in? Here we are. Indiana, could you unmute yourself?
Sorry.
That's not a problem, we have, everybody has trouble. Okay, I'm going to ask you if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure.
Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic.
Thank you. I'm now going to ask Selectman Chadwick if you would do us the honors of the recognition.
Yes, of course. Let me say first, Indiana, I've known you for a long time through coaching you with the Tigers. And I know that I'm one of the many people in this town that are very proud of you, of what you've become in this town. Keep up the good work, all right? I know you're going to lead in this country someday, so. With that said, I'm honored to be able to read this. The Board of Selectmen of Wareham, Massachusetts awards this certificate of congratulations to Indiana Troop in honor of being the first Wareham student to be elected governor of Massachusetts for a day as part of the Boys State Program. Wareham High School students have participated in the Boys State Program for several decades. The Boys State Program is a part of the American Legion and is designed to teach democratic values, improve knowledge of government, and encourage citizens. Involvement through a program, and mercy students in grassroots democracy. We, the Wareham Board of Selectmen congratulate and commend you for the participation in this organization to improve future democracy. Presented on this day, the 11th of October, 2022, from the Wareham Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
You both. On the board, we thank you very much for all the stuff you've done for us and you'll continue to do. You make us all very proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we, parents, his dad and I are very appreciative to all of you for recognizing him for this.
Well, all I can say basically is from my experience in life, the children, the parents have a great influence on the children. So both of you should also take great pride in what your son has become and will become.
You do, thank you.
Well, thank you. Just to make note, Town Administrator Derek Sullivan is also in the meeting now. We started two minutes early, Derek, apologize. Next, we have Board comments, actually announcements, I'm sorry. Tricia, any announcements at all?
The only thing I would like to say is to call some attention to the beautiful weather we're having in fall and encourage citizens, if they don't look at two resources, Walk with Wareham on Facebook and the Wareham Land Trust. They both have wonderful walks and ways to inspire themselves by enjoying our local environment. Hope you, hope you take advantage of it.
Thank you. Selectman Chadwick? You're muted.
There we go. I have no announcements, but I do have Board comments, so I'll just wait until Board comments.
Thank you. Selectman Bessie?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, myself, I only have one, the wife gave it to me, so I have to read it. We have a public hearing Monday, 10/17, 4:30 PM, Room 320. Multi-service conservation commission has a filing for fee changes. So it's important, if anybody is interested in what the fee changes will be, et cetera, the information, it's important you come participate in the hearing. That's all I have for today. Okay, Board comments. Selectman Wirths?
I have nothing right now.
Selectman Chadwick?
The only thing I'd like to say is I stopped by the new parking lot in Onsted today. And I have to say, it's beautiful. Municipal Venus, you guys have done a phenomenal job down there with everything, the planting, the curving. Looks really nice and you guys did a really nice job with it. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Selectman Bessie?
No comments tonight either, thank you.
Okay, I have nothing for tonight, actually. We have no appointments, reappointments, or interviews. We have no licenses and permits. We're a little bit early. So we'll move on to, actually. We can go down to item 10B. I believe we should have, I think Kristin, and let me see who else is here from school. I think we have Mr. Bruggeoli, Kristen Flynn, and Matt DeAndrea. If you, Bob, if you could bring them in. Also, Town Council Rich Bowen is also in the meeting now. There we go. Okay. We have basically two articles, Article 26 and 27. Matt, if you want to start off on that?
Sure, sure, thank you. And good evening, anyone, everyone, and Mr. Chairman. Do we have one additional staff member from the school system, Eric Trayhan? He's our facility.
Bob, let him in, please, also.
Thank you. Okay. So thank you, thank you for inviting us tonight. I would like to give you a little bit of the backstory on these Warren articles. The first was back in January, on January 20th of this year, 2022. The school committee voted to participate in the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program for the high school boilers and the roof on the middle school. The high school boilers are the original boilers from 1991 and are due to be replaced. And the middle school roof, we've had problems through the years with leaks to such an extent that school had to be canceled at one time. On January 25th, right after that, 2022, the Select Board also voted to participate in the program. The first step was a feasibility study for both. It was $95,000 feasibility study for the roof and $75,000 for the boilers. Both of those studies were completed early in September last month. And during that process, MSBA informed us that we were eligible for 71.58% reimbursement rate for these projects. So the high school boilers, the project will include four new water heaters, new mixing valves, expansion tanks, and pumps. Right now, the high school has six boilers. They will remove those six boilers and replace them with five new boilers that are more efficient and effective, so we do not need to have six. The feasibility study came back as an estimate cost of $2,462,614 for this work. That is the Warren article we submitted. The town of Wareham will be reimbursed $1,762,739.10 and will be responsible for $699,874.90 plus $73,331 in contingency. So all said and done, it should cost the town $773,206. So that is the Warren article for the boilers. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to stop there for questions or keep on going?
No, what we'll do is we'll stop there for a minute to make it easier, because we do want to. First off, we'll go through, Tricia, you have any questions at all for Matt?
Yes, I just, I have a short, it's almost a house cleaning question. The paperwork that I'm looking in front of me cites an article that doesn't have any of the financial information in it. However, the motion that's here does state a total figure of $2,462,614. And so assuming that the article that goes before the town will be the one that is most like this motion that has the actual funding in it, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Barrett, any questions on this?
I have no questions at this time.
Ron?
No, I mean, just more of a comment. I think, you know, if, if we as a town have the ability to, you know, upgrade the boilers and hot water tanks in the high school for relatively short money based on the cost estimate and then what we're going to get refunded. I think it's great and it's just a further investment into, and a cheaper investment rather than, you know, the conversation of a new school or anything like that to spend that kind of money and get what we're getting. I think it's going to be a good thing for the school for the long term.
Thank you. I'm also going to ask Mr. Sullivan to comment if you'd like, since the town also has to come up with some money to make sure that we have the budget available for us, because this is, I don't think we expected this at this particular time.
Are you talking about the boilers, Mr. Chairman?
Boilers on the roof, either one. It's right now with the boilers only.
Yeah, the boilers will fund with free cash. If free cash is not certified, my recommendation would be for, from the stabilization fund and then replenish at the Springtown meeting. So we have, we have it covered through either source.
Thank you very much, I have no questions at all. I would basically at this time, with nobody having any questions, take a motion for favorable action.
I make, I move that the town appropriate the amount of $2,462,614 for the purpose of paying costs of the boiler replacement project at Wareham High School, Seven Viking Drive, Wareham, Mass, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the town has applied for a grant from the Massachusetts Schools Building Authority. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the town manager is authorized to borrow said amount from MGL Chapter 44 or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is non-entitlement. And this goes on for about another two paragraphs. Are we good here or do we want the whole thing?
No, I think all we're doing at this point here is just, we're basically the word for recommendation for favorable action. I believe you already recommended the article before.
I was going to say, can I just read it all? But it's a
just be, let it go for a while and enjoy it. So the motion is for favorable action.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Wirths?
Yes.
We tease everybody once in a while.
I'm up for it, guys, go ahead.
We all get it, don't worry. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mrs. Slaven says yes. The vote is 4-0-0, favorable action. Next one, Matt?
Great, thank you very much.
We must take advantage, we're in good spirits.
The next, next Warren article is for the roof project and it is a little bit more complicated. The initial application to MSBA was for an entire roof replacement. During the feasibility study, it was learned that there are sections of the roof at the middle school that do not qualify for MSBA reimbursement. And the reason why they do not qualify is that they're not old enough. They need to be at least 30 years old. On the top of the middle school, there are 22 sections, roof sections on the building. And only seven of them are old enough to be eligible for reimbursement. So after the feasibility study was done, we learned this, we learned that to replace the entire roof is $8,395,996. Wareham would be reimbursed only for sections of the roof that qualified. So there would be a $3,104,375 reimbursement. And the town would be on the hook for $5,364,952. So we, you know, we talked about this, we spoke with the Chair of the Select Board. We spoke with, with the Town Administrator and we came to the conclusion that we thought that that number was too big for the town to, to take on right now. And we discussed and we decided that we would break the project, excuse me, into two parts. Part one would take place in the summer of 2023, this, this coming summer. And that, that project would include three sections of the roof, sections that are, that are labeled F, J, and K. Those are the sections, specifically Section F is the section that is is leaked, that leaks constantly. We have had a roof contractor out here many times working on it, trying to repair it. But as you may know, repairing a leaking roof can be very tricky in determining exactly where the water is coming from. So this is persistently leaking and we're getting water in the building and you know the damage that can do. So we thought that we would attack those sections of the roof first. None of those three sections is reimbursable. But the feasibility study has told us that it will cost approximately $1,500,000 to complete the work to replace the roof on those sections. And that is the Warren article that we have submitted to you, the 1.5 million to complete the work in the summer of 2023 on those three sections. What we hope to do as part two is to bring back a second Warren article for the Springtown meeting for the remainder of the roof. Again, portions of the remainder are reimbursable and some are not for a roof project that would be done in the summer of 2024 to complete the, the remainder of the roof. And then we would have a whole new roof on the middle school. So that's, that's a little bit of the backstory on this project. And so right now, for this town meeting, we're looking for the 1.5 million to prepare for the summer of 2023 roof project.
Thank you. This is, we have any questions for?
I don't have any.
Mr. Bessie, any questions?
Yeah, so in just, just listening to that, so doing a very small portion in the, the summer of 2023. I mean, I guess maybe this would be more of a question for Mr. Sullivan is if we, if we don't have the feasibility to do it now, how do we know that if we bring it, if it comes to, you know, the Springtown meeting, how do we know that we're going to have the feasibility as a town then to, you know, think about this in a two-part phase?
Yeah, I think it's more about the will of the voters. Bringing something to the voters within, I'd say, three to four, four weeks of an $8 million project without much priming, I don't think, I don't think it was very fair to put it for lack of a better term. And I didn't see a favorable outcome. So it's, the timing has nothing to do with what, anything anybody's done. It's when the paperwork, it's when everything came back in. It just didn't seem like it was the right thing to do at that time. We know that there's a leak in the roof that's caused us to lose at least one week of school at a time. So that's what we're looking to address now. And, you know, the, the hope is the town would have the appetite to fix the rest of it at the, at the next town meeting. But we did not want to miss taking care of that section that actively has issues.
Okay, no, just that, it's like, puts more understanding behind it. I just wanted to see what the, the logic of the thought process, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
I don't have any questions, more or less, just a comment. I'm kind of kind of bummed out that we don't have a way to pay for it all to be done at once. And it's understandable because it's such a large price tag. Just eventually, people in the town need to realize when we have companies that have to keep coming back, that's going to cost more money eventually because that's more fuel for them to come back every time. So I understand there's no way we could afford to do it all at once. But eventually, long run, we're, we're paying more money for them to come back. And I like the fact that this is being done now, so. Side note, Mr. DeAndrea, I think you're doing a phenomenal job at this school.
My only comment really is okay, people remember we, I think we had a town meeting in which it was a girls' basketball game or something going on. And it was raining and the rain was coming through the roof of the high school. But we had a town meeting, it's pretty embarrassing to say the least. Again, as Derek said, as, you know, both of the Selectmen have talked about is the problem is you only have so much money to go around at a time. And I believe in the capital planning, this, these projects throughout a few more years now, actually, before they were actually to come due. So unfortunately, things have moved a lot quicker than expected. I will need a motion for favorable action, please.
Make a motion that the town appropriate $1,500,000 to pay costs of replacing a portion of the Wareham Middle School roof as well as the payment of all of the costs incidental and related thereto.
Give you a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Wirths?
I, I agree, yes.
Yes.
I vote yes, yeah.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick? I think you froze, I'm raising your hand.
Yes.
Thank you. Alan Volchis, 4-0-0. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it, we understand the problems. We'll get through it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Greatly appreciate your support. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Bob, could you bring in Gary Buckminster, please? Gary, you want to unmute yourself? There we go.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you, Gary? We're going to, we had the hearing scheduled for 7:15, so we can start on that for the motion, but for the hearing.
Yeah, I make a motion to open the hearing for amendment for the town's general bylaws by deleting in its entirety Division 4, Article 1, Sections 2, 2A, and 2B, and further to insert a new division, their XII, Article 1, titled Waterways Rules.
Second.
Mrs. Wirths?
Yes, I vote for this.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yeah.
Mrs. Slaven, yes. Make a comment before we start. The redo of the work that Mr. Buckminster did was extremely thorough and quite a large document. It's been available in the clerk's office with the old version, the new version, and comments, et cetera. And it's been available for the public for well over a month. So I hate to use the word, I assume, but I believe all of us have had a chance to read through this thoroughly because it is a very large document. So hopefully, if anybody has questions, do it. Gary, why don't you give us the how, when, and where, what we got in front of us?
Thank you. So what you have before you is 16 sections of the town of Wareham Waterways Rule. Sorry, someone's been talking. So anyway, so what you have before you is proposal for the upgraded Waterways Rule. The document consists of 16 sections. The town of Wareham's first waterways rules and regulations were approved during a town meeting in 1998, a hall town meeting in 1999. They were adopted, so they've served us for approximately 24 years. At that time, we've seen some dynamics change of the waterways and make portions of the original bylaw no longer applicable to what we're, we're seeing and what's going on. After the review of this, we ended up just saying, let's, we were going to cut in peace and put things back together with the original document. We made the decision that it was, it was better to overhaul the document in its entirety to cover everything that we were looking at. The purpose of this Waterways Rules, Rules is just to define and clarify the decision-making process, establish uniform decisions, procedures, standards for activities that have an impact on the waterways and are hilarious. And they'll be empowered by our department as well as the police officer is able to also enforce these regulations through the town. Most of the regulations, they consist of boring vessel and waterways management, coastal public property management and allowable uses, recreational activity guidelines and rules, preservation of shellfish and natural resources, vessel operation enforcement, freshwater pond use, and commercial use and regulations for commercial entities that are utilizing our waterways for marina bases and moorings.
All set?
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Wirths, any questions, Mr. Buckminster?
No questions, really, just a comment that I thought it was an exceptional piece of work and take, thank you for taking the time and efforts to put this together.
I appreciate everyone's help. Attorney Bowen was extremely helpful. Attorney Boeing was extremely helpful and I am always grateful for his help with this. And I and I hope that we provided you with a very fair document for people. It it does have some, uh, you know, strict regulations on it. But I wanted to make sure that it was something that everybody could could work with and and it didn't leave anything out, so.
Thank you. Mister Bessie?
No, I I think it's uh it's good. It's, you know, like Mister Buckminster said, you know, almost twenty four years. And certainly a lot of things have changed in that time and uh it's it's good that uh they've taken the time to go through it and very thorough with it. Uh, and I just want to thank them for the work that they put into it and everybody that was involved in in bringing it forward and uh will uh definitely think it's going to be good.
Thank you. Mister Chadwick.
All along the same lines, thank you very much for putting your hard work into this. Looks very good and uh thank you.
Thank you.
For me, it's really simple. Thanks, Gary.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Not easy. Okay, uh, Bob, do we have anybody? Basically, I'm looking to see if anybody in the public that's here. You know, monitoring, you know, has any comments pro or con, if they want to raise their hand, Bob will let them in one at a time. You have to be, make sure you're a Wareham resident as well, though. I don't see anybody coming in, so I would ask for a favorable action motion again. Can't he attraction you muted? There you go.
Make a motion that um. The town amend the town's general bylaws by deleting in its entirety, Division four, Article One, Sections two, two A, and two B. And further to insert a new Division thirteen, Article One, titled Waterways Rules and Regulations. A copy of which is on file in the office of the town clerk.
And that's a favorable motion, correct?
Yes, that is.
I second that.
Thank you. This works.
Yes. I vote yes.
Thank you, Bessie.
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
This is Slaven, she has four zero zero. Gary, on the next group of articles, you have twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Is there anything there that needs any real explanation that these come up every year constantly and they're pretty straightforward? There's going to be no questions.
Correct. The first two articles are just payments on purchases that we already made. Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, hold on. Brain dead today. I'm tired from being a wall and will they have to have a motion to close the hearing as well? We never did that.
Motion to close the hearing.
Need a second. This is words.
Yes.
Thank you. My fault. I apologize. Mister Bestie?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. Not, don't do enough hearings to keep in practice. So as I started to say, we had twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Uh, is there anything in there, Gary, that needs any other explanation except for the normal?
No, sir. The twelve and thirteen are both articles for items that we've already purchased their payments. Uh, towards the onset pure docks as well as the outboard engines. This will be the last payment for the motors. Uh, that will be going on the our main control boat. And the Article fourteen is a transfer of funds for upgrades to our emergency communication U H F radios for the. The operability of the police department, fire departments in our surrounding towns as well as our.
Thank you.
Regional stuff, so.
Okay, what I'm going to do is ask the sports, you have any questions for any one of the three articles?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Bessie?
No.
And Mister Chadwick?
No questions.
Okay, I need a motion to basically favorable action for articles twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
You want a single motion or individual ones?
No, single motion, fine.
Make a motion that the town will vote to transfer the sums needed to meet Articles twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
We don't need to, I apologize. You just have to add, just the motion for favorable action, sorry.
Okay, I make a motion that the tap that there is a favorable favorable action on Articles two, thirteen, and fourteen.
Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Second.
Thank you. Miss Words.
Yes, I I support and say we say yes to both of these, all of these three of them.
Thank you, Mister Bessie.
Yes.
Mister Chancellor.
Yes.
Mister Slaven is yes, four zero zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you all. Have a good night. Thanks, Gary.
Be safe. Uh, next up, uh, Bob, would you bring in Sam Corbin, please? I apologize to the audience. Unfortunately, you know, the board of selectmen, we have one person who's been here for a long time, Zou. And we have three new selectmen and selectmen Slaver here doesn't do very much of the hearings anymore. It just takes a while to get back to into sequence anyways. Okay. Sammy, you want to unmute yourself? There you go. Good.
Good evening, everybody.
Would you like to speak about your particular citizen petition article?
Yes, it's very easy to receive and not look for any money, and I don't want to change anything. What I want to do is keep the authority running the way it is. It's been successful. It hasn't been no problems, been a huge asset to the sound town. The reason, many of the reasons I'm doing this is. The board is going to be completely elected and you hope people. Who have the education ability to to help the authority uh run, but you can't always. Bet on that. The town planner is not part of the committee. I've worked with Ken Buckman now for a year and a half on the town planning board. And he does a great job, he's a great asset to the town, and I think to the authority as well. Uh, also, Derek is not on it and Derek knows every department. He knows where the money is, where the budget is, where every. Cash selectmen and as well, current selectmen have told me. Accolades of our Derek doing a great job, and I think he's an asset to the committee as well. I think that. It it's part of the present plan, it includes. Hiring staff, hiring consultants, hiring engineers, hiring excellent. People to help them, but we already have the people in place. Two selectmen, Derek, Ken, and a citizen at large, uh, the authority right now. They're doing a great job. They had a lot of success, have a lot of plans for the future. And Jen, basically, I just don't want to change it. The article at the State House now, I think it's a mistake. I think that we do what we're doing now, uh, we'll be fine. Any questions?
This is worse.
No, and I, it's my understanding also that this is an article put for forth by the citizens. So this has to go on the. The warrant for the town meeting, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we still may be, we will vote favorable action. We get to that. Mister Bessie?
Uh, no question.
Mister Chadwick? Muted, raising a. Thank you. I have no questions either. Uh, this is where it's going. If you'd make a motion for favorable action.
I make a motion for favorable action for the town to vote to rescind its prior vote approving Article seventeen from the fall twenty twenty one town meeting. And further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to notify the state legislature. Of the vote of recession and to request no further action to be taken toward legislature approval of Article seventeen. Or any other action relative thereto.
Give me a second. Okay, unfavorable action, this is what?
Vote yes.
Mister Bessie?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. Vote is four zero zero. Thank you very much, Mister Corbett.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, next up, we have the abatement. This is words.
This is a discussion on, and so I don't think, do we need any discussion on this?
Well, it's a discussion, a possible vote, so.
Vote to approve the abatement recommendation in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and eighty eight dollars and forty cents. Due to approved opt out and reduction fee applications.
Yes, seconds.
Second.
Any questions? This is words.
No.
Mister Chadwick?
None.
Mister Bessie?
None.
Myself, none. On the vote of a favorable action, this is words.
All right, I um make a motion that for a favorable vote regarding the following article.
You already did. Which is just it's.
Wait, I'm down the next one, yeah.
Yeah, it's a yes or no, that's all.
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Mister Bessie?
Yes.
Mister Slaven is yes. Okay, the next one is going to be fun. We have the warrant in front of us for the elections. We used to have this title on doing this all the time because he could speed read. Anyone want to take that up to read this besides myself?
Let me see if I can pull it up.
Should be in your packet. If not, I can read it. Just going to take a while.
No, what, no, I I have the packet. I'm just scrolling through it. I have a digital copy of the packet. Let me just find it. I don't mind reading it. Let me just pull it up.
Yeah. My voice is a little off today. I'm sorry.
Sorry, just give me one second.
You talking about the summary?
Not the summary. We have to actually go through the whole piece.
Town meeting warrant, da 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 da. Hold on, I'm almost there. I think so, anyway. Hold on, I just passed it. It's right before the host community commencement.
I'm off the Massachusetts William Francis Galvin.
Yeah, so, yeah, okay, that it's that page, okay. So. Start at the top with the greetings, all of that. Are you going to read all of it?
Yep, just as it is.
Okay. To the constables of the town of Wareham. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said city or town. Who are qualified to vote in elections to vote at precincts one to six. Precincts one and six, Town Hall Auditorium, fifty four Marion Road. Precincts two and three, Hammond School, thirteen Highland Ave, precincts four and five, Redmond Hall, seven forty five Main Street. On Tuesday, the eighth day of November two thousand and twenty two, from seven AM to eight PM for the following purpose. To cast their votes in the state election for the candidates for the following offices. Governor and Lieutenant Governor for this Commonwealth. Attorney General for this Commonwealth. Secretary of State for this Commonwealth. Treasurer for this Commonwealth. Auditor for this Commonwealth. Representative in Congress, Ninth District. Counselor, First District. Senator in General Court, Third Bristol and Plymouth District. Representative in General Court, Second Plymouth District. District Attorney, Plymouth District. Sheriff, Plymouth County. County Commissioner, Plymouth County. Regional School Committee, Upper Cape Cod District. Question one, proposed amendment to the Constitution. Do you approve of the adoption of an amendment of the Constitution summarized below? Which was approved by the General Court in joint sessions of the two houses on June twelfth, twenty nineteen. Yays, one forty seven, nays, forty eight. And again, on June ninth, twenty twenty one, yea, one fifty nine, nay, forty one. Summary, this proposed constitutional amendment would establish an additional four percent state income tax. On the portion of annual taxable income in excess of one million dollars. This income level would be adjusted annually by the same method used for federal income tax brackets. To reflect increases in the cost of living, revenues from this tax would be used. Subject to appropriation by the state legislature for public education, public colleges and universities. And for the repair and maintenance of roads, bridges, and public transportation. The proposed amendment would apply to tax years beginning on or after January first, two thousand and twenty three. A yes vote would amend the state constitution to impose an additional four percent tax on the portion of incomes. Over one million dollars to be used, subject to appropriation by the state legislature on education and transportation. A no vote would make no change in the state constitution relative to income tax. Question two, law proposed by initiative petition. Do you approve of a law summarized below of which no vote was taken by the Senate or the House of Representatives on or before May third, two thousand and twenty two? Summary, this proposed law would direct the Commissioner of Massachusetts Divisions of Insurance to approve. Or disapprove the rates of dental health plans and would require that a dental insurance carrier meet. An annual aggregate medical loss ratio for its covered dental benefits plans of eighty three percent. The medical loss ratio would measure the amount of premium dollars a dental insurance carrier spends. On its members dental expenses and quality improvements as opposed to administrative expenses. If a carrier's annual aggregate. The loss ratio is less than eighty three percent, the carrier would be required to refund the excess premiums to its covered individuals and groups. The proposed law would allow the commissioner to waive or adjust the refunds, only if it is determined that issuing refunds would result in financial impairment to the carrier. The proposed law would apply to dental benefit plans regardless of whether they are issued directly by a carrier. Through the connector or through intermediary. The proposed law would not apply to dental benefit plans issued, delivered, or renewed to a self insured group. Of where the carrier is acting as a third party administrator. The proposed law would require the carriers offering dental benefits plans to submit information. About their current and projected medical loss ratio, administrative expenses, and other financial information to the commissioner. Each carrier would be required to submit an annual comprehensive financial statement to the Division of Insurance. Itemized by market group size and line of business. A carrier that also provides administrative services to one or more self insured groups would also be required to file an appendix. To their annual financial statement with information about its self insured business. The proposed law would impose a late penalty on a carrier that does not file its annual report on or before April first. The division would be required to make this. Submitted data public to issue an annual summary to certain legislative committees and to exchange the data with the Health Policy Commission. The commissioner would be required to adopt standards requiring the registration of persons or entities. Not otherwise licensed or registered by the commissioner in criteria for the standardized reporting and uniform allocation methodologies among carriers. The proposed law would all, the proposed law would allow the commissioner to approve dental benefit policies. For the purpose of being offered to individuals or groups. The commissioner would be required to adopt regulations to determine eligibility criteria. The proposed law would require carriers to file group product based rates and any changes to group rating factors. That are to be effective on January first of each year on or before July first of the preceding year. The commissioner would be required to disapprove any proposed changes to base rates that are excessive, inadequate, or unreasonable in relation to the benefits charged. The commissioner would also be required to disapprove any change to group rating factors that is discrimination discriminatory. Or not particularly sound. The proposed law sets forth criteria that if met, would require the commissioner to presumptively disapprove a carrier's rate. Including if the aggregate medical loss ratio for all dental benefit plans offered by a carrier is less than eighty three percent. The proposed law would establish procedures to be followed if a proposed rate is presumptively disapproved or if the commissioner disapproves a rate. The proposed law would require the division. Hearing if a carrier reports a risk based capital ratio on a combined entity basis that exceeds seven hundred percent in its annual report. The proposed law would require the commissioner to. Regulations consistent with its provisions by October first, twenty twenty three. The proposed law would apply to all dental benefit plans issued, made effective, delivered, or remove renewed on or after January first, twenty twenty four. A yes vote would regulate dental insurance rates, including by requiring companies to spend at least eighty three percent of their premiums on members dental expenses. And quality improvements instead of administrative expenses and by mailing other changes to dental insurance regulations. A no vote would make no change in the law relative to the regulations that apply to dental insurance companies. Question three, law proposed by initiative petition. Do you approve of a law summarized below on which no vote was taken by the Senate or the House of Representatives on or before May third, two thousand and twenty-two? Summary. The proposed law would increase the statewide limits on the combined number of licenses. For the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption, including licenses for all alcoholic beverages and for wines and malt beverages. That any one retailer could own or control from nine to twelve licenses in two thousand and twenty-three. To fifteen licenses in two thousand and twenty-seven and to eighteen licenses in two thousand and thirty-one. Beginning in two thousand and twenty-three, the proposed law would set a maximum number of all alcoholic beverages licenses. That any one retailer could own or control. As seven licenses unless a retailer currently holds more than seven such licenses. The proposed law would require retailers to conduct the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumptions. Through face-to-face transactions and would prohibit automated or self-checkout sales of alcoholic beverages by such retailers. The proposed law would. The calculation of the fine that the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission may accept in lieu of suspending any license issued under the State Liquor Control Act. The proposed law would modify the formula for calculating such fee. From being based on the gross profits of the sale of alcoholic beverages to being based on the gross profits on all retail sales. The proposed law would also add out-of-state motor vehicle licenses to the list of forms of identification that any holder of a license issued. Under the State Liquor Control Act, whether agent or employees. They choose to reasonably rely on for proof of a person's identi- identity and age. A yes vote would increase the number of licenses a retailer could have for the sale of alcoholic beverages. To be consumed off-premises, limit the number of all alcoholic beverages licenses that a retailer could acquire. Restrict use of self-checkout and require retailers to accept customers' out-of-state identification. A no vote would make no change in the laws governing the retail sale of alcoholic beverages. Question four. Referendum on an existing law. Do you approve of a law summarized below, which was approved by the House of Representatives and Senate on May twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two? Summary. This law allows Massachusetts residents who cannot provide proof of lawful presence in the United States. To obtain a standard driver's license or learner's permit if they meet all the other qualifications for a standard license or learner's permit. Including a road test and insurance and provide proof of their identity, date of birth and residency. The law provides that when processing an application for such a license or learner's permit or motor vehicle registration, the Register of Motor Vehicles may not ask about. Create a record of the citizenship or immigration status of the applicant, except as otherwise required by law. This law does not allow people who cannot provide proof of lawful presence in the United States to obtain a real ID. To prove identity and date of birth, the law requires an applicant to present at least two documents. One from each of the following categories. One, a valid on-expired foreign passport or a valid on-expired. Counselor identification document. And two, a valid on-expired driver's license from any United States. Or state or territory. An original or certified copy of a birth certificate, a valid on-expired foreign national identification card. A valid on-expired foreign driver's license or a magic marriage certificate or divorce decree issued by any state or territory of the United States. One of the documents presented by an applicant must include a photograph and one must include a date of birth. Any documents not in English must be accompanied by a certified translation. The register may renew any documents issued. By another county and by another country to determine whether they may be used as proof of identity or date of birth. The law requires that applicants for a driver's license or learner's permit shall attest under the pains and penalties of perjury. That their license has not been suspended or revoked in any other state, country or jurisdiction. The loss, the law specifies the that information provided by or relating to any applicant or license holder. Will not be public record and should not be disclosed. Except as required by federal law or as authorized by Attorney General Regulations and except for purposes of motor vehicle insurance. The law directs the Register of Motor Vehicles to make regulations regarding the documents required. Of the United States citizens and others who provide proof of lawful presence with their license application. The law also requires the Register and the Secretary of the Commonwealth to establish procedures and regulations. To ensure that an applicant for a standard driver's license or learner's permit who does not provide proof. Of lawful presence will not be automatically registered to vote. The law takes effect on July first, two thousand and twenty-three. A yes vote would keep in place the law, which would allow Massachusetts residents who cannot provide proof of lawful presence in the United States. To obtain a driver's license or permit if they meet the other requirements for doing so. A no vote will repeal this law. And make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting given under the hands. And this would be. The date, uh, selectmen of Wareham, signed by the selectman, signed by the constable, month and day, two thousand and twenty-two. Warrant must be posted by November first, two thousand and twenty-two, at least seven days prior to the November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. State elections, the end.
Thank you very much, Ron. I'm sure you had a wonderful time doing that. What we need to do here simply, Tricia, is to, we need a motion to vote to accept the warrant as written. That's all we need to do. I think you muted again.
So to confirm, I make a motion that for a favorable vote that we.
Favorable vote. This is.
Sorry. Vote on the warrant for the two thousand and twenty-two state election.
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman, doesn't the board's clerk have to restate the whole thing again?
Uh, you don't really don't want to do that to it, do you? He's only.
This is pick on Trisha night. It just gets worse with every movement.
I actually.
I owe you one, Richard.
Can you read it again?
Okay, we have, we have the motion. We have a second. Did we get a second?
Yes, I seconded, I seconded.
Mrs. Wertz.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
Mr. Slav. It's yes, Mr. Bessie.
Yes.
I'm just checking. Okay, thank you. Next item on the list is discussion of possible vote to approve a host agreement. I believe we have, uh, two people that should be here. Check and see if they're in the.
So there's somebody in there, HD tow truck. I think they might be, maybe.
Yeah, I think Mr. Perry might be representing the person also. Rob, if you want to try those two, see where they are. Rob, do you want to, uh, okay, good.
You hear me? I don't see me, but I think you can hear me.
Well, I see a little round circle with a, looks like an M and M below it.
Am I supposed to start video? Oh, then, good. Oh, that's better.
There we have, we have all of you.
We, we have a number of people here, four people. I'm Robert Terry. I thank you very much for entertaining us tonight. I'm joined by John Carlson, the principal of each of the four LLCs.
Thank you, Bob.
And attorney Charles Reed, who will actually do most of the talking since he's much more intelligent than I am. And. I'm also joined by Christina. Danny Odeus. And I apologize for having troubles with her name. Oh, Mr. Board, how are you tonight?
We're all fine. Bob, what we're gonna do is we have, I think there's four separate host agreements. From what I can see.
You intend to, okay.
Uh, we basically.
You gonna talk about them separately or together?
No, I think we can go down the line. The only questions we're gonna have really is, uh, I think on the delivery, we're technically have three, which is what I stated. Uh, maximum is in the town of Wareham, just so you know. And the other piece is when we get done, we're not going to vote on this tonight. Uh, I want a full board and with Mrs. Whiteside back here, so with only four of us here, I really don't want to have a vote on this.
I understand that and I appreciate that.
Okay, you're up.
Thank you. My name is Attorney Charles Reed, Professor Law. I am a cannabis attorney. Uh, I have licensed, uh, helped license several, uh, companies. And will be, uh, drafting all the operating plans. Necessary for these licenses. Uh, starting with Smokey Green Acres, we plan on being about a five thousand to ten thousand square foot. Uh, Kennedy, uh, grower as we develop it. Open up. Looking at, uh, grossing for about four million dollars a year annually, at least three percent.
Could you speak a little louder, sir? We're having.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Try, gonna try and get closer to. Do it, um. Thank you. Um, so we, as Smokey Green Acres, uh, we plan on putting up a, eventually putting up a separate building or, uh. Greenhouse depending on the local zone and we're gonna have to work with the building department on that. In a separate building than what's currently at Three Tow Road. Uh, as Three Tow Road, uh, will be used actually for the, the existing building at Three Tow, Tow Road would be used for the Turf Factory LLC, Candy Factory. LLC and, um. Uh, Dank Delivery LLC. This, uh. Each company will op- operate independently utilizing the same resources under, uh. Uh, the, the regulations. Uh, these companies will share bathrooms and common areas for like break rooms and such. The main, uh, issue with the Cannabis Control Commission as far as security goes with these separate buildings. Is that their limited access areas are actually controlled separately. Which will be electronic key card and all the standard, um. Security devices that the CCC looks for. The reason these companies were created independently is because of, in my view, uh, under thirty-eight law, Massachusetts general law is thirty-eight. If you get in trouble and under the. Uh, CMR. If you get in trouble under one license as a company, you get in trouble under them all. We're not anticipating that, but as a lawyer, I, I think about these things, so. Our, uh. Sole proprietor here, um, or ma- majority proprietor. Uh, wishes to protect each license separately by creating separate LLCs. Furthermore, given that they will have very different businesses and different. Objectives as businesses, though they be owned by the same. Um, it allows each company to seek their own vision independently of the single owner's vision. As they will have, uh, a more diverse employment schedule, which we will be planning. To, uh, hire as many local individuals as possible. There will be a positive impact plan, as I'm sure you're familiar with, that will be developed for the commission. Whereas we'll choose, uh. Various ways to positively impact Wareham as well, as well as the surrounding areas. Um, I, I think we all know if all the surrounding areas were better towns, it, it just helps this town as well. I will say for the delivery operator. There was an issue, my understanding is there was an issue as to whether or not there's enough business to handle. Uh, another delivery operator. Uh, Dank Delivery is not going to be just a Wareham business in planning on, uh, delivering Wareham. In fact, uh, Dank Delivery plans on opening up a, a second location as allowed by the commission. In the CMR. Across the state and Dank Delivery, uh, wants to literally deliver across the state based on various time management. So the market might not necessarily be, be the same market. Uh, as far as delivery. Uh, now, as to the current delivery operators, they're gonna have, even if you were to sign tonight, which you just indicated that you're gonna take a vote on another night. Even if you were to sign tonight. It, it's going to take upwards of a year for that company to go through the licensing process. And we have to do a build-out in this building. The property is not in great condition. There's gonna be substantial, uh, uh, building repair to this property cleanup. Uh, which is all beneficial to that entire neighborhood. You have a lot of, you have a nice intersection there. With all these new, relatively new looking buildings and gas stations. It'd be nice, uh, to have that area cleaned up and a new looking building standing there. It's also gonna bring jobs to that area, which will also, uh, help the surrounding, uh. Businesses such as the gas station, uh. Coming in and out, uh, now. The delivery company will eventually like to seek, um. The use of all electric cars. There will be some, uh. Uh, gas operated vehicles in the beginning, uh, to ensure, uh. Uh, that they work basically, uh, until, uh, things can be set up, but the, the delivery company plans on putting in. Their own supercharger, uh, when they get electric, uh, vehicles and such, they'll do everything on site. Uh, it lowered that carbon footprint. In the beginning, though, it's not necessarily feasible and with this current market, I can tell you I own my own delivery company. And we just purchased four vehicles and it costs ninety thousand dollars. One of them was used and it cost more than the three brand new ones of the same model. Uh, it's just a crazy market out there, uh, so. Delivery companies gotta take what they can get, electric packing, substantial money and can order them, uh, directly from the factory. All operating plans, uh, that will be created have already been reviewed by the commission because I have used the same plans for other companies. Uh, at this point, they pretty much just go through, get approved, uh. And, uh, we are willing to adjust them. To whatever the town needs, I'm, uh. Willing to put forward, uh, that there'll be very little the town will need to change from our plans. We, we will provide these plans. As they are finally finalized, uh, to both the, uh, local authorities as far as, uh, fire and police as well as the, uh, board selectmen. There will be a business plan. We currently, we've been working on one business plan. They will be separated into four separate business plans. And four separate sets of operating plans as they will be independent and, uh. Put into motion separately as far as, uh, applications. Each company is roughly, without getting into specific details, is expecting roughly four million dollars in gross. After the first full year of operating. Uh, with that said, that's a, a lot of cheddar for this town and we hope to contribute to this town as much as the other businesses have in, in town. Without stepping on any toes, uh, it would be nice. For the town itself to have another cultivator to supply products at a much cheaper cost because it's local. That helps all the other businesses in town. Plus, we will be in need of certain services that we do not have as far as, uh, looking for a licensed transporter. Transport operator, uh, which brings it from facility to facility versus, uh, delivering home delivery, which is what we plan to seek. Are there any questions at this time?
This works.
I don't know if it's a question, question so much as a statement. This is a pretty extensive operation, even if you've broken it down into four unique corporations. I really would like to see the business plan for it. I'd like to see the security plans for it. Um, I'd like to know that what the, um. That the event, investment dollars and the funding behind it is there to make this real before I would even consider it, so. It's nice that there's a little contract here filled out. Uh, I'm not sure why there are the needs for two separate, uh, manufacturing. Contracts unless you're gonna divide the types of products that are manufactured.
That's exactly what's gonna happen. This is gonna be, one's gonna be for.
I need to see a detailed business plan for this, really, before I went to vote on anything.
Okay, uh, so, um. I'm assuming or hoping that we will get on, uh, the schedule for the next meeting and by then, uh, like, uh, at least two weeks. Prior to that meeting, I can have, uh, all of the operating plans over to the town.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick.
No, I have nothing at this time. I'm reading through it and, uh. I agree with Tricia. I'd like to see more of a business, uh, whole business plan on the whole thing. Uh, but I'm also, also aware that you're, you're within, I don't know, uh, I'd say two football. But I'm also, also aware that you're, you're within, I don't know, I'd say two football fields of another facility that if I'm not mistaken is doing the exact same thing. And I might be wrong, but you're kind of flooding the same area with it, in my opinion.
Is that a micro business that does cultivation? And manufacturing, well.
Yes.
As far as being next to each other, it makes zero difference in this market because they're not retailing. They are planning to sell to all the retailers across the state wholesale, that is what a micro business does. So we're not necessarily even competing or even looking for the same customers. As far as that goes, and we plan to eventually be bigger than them. Now, as far as the market goes, every, for the first three years, there was a twenty-two percent, more than a twenty-two percent increase in the market. This last year, we saw over a thirty percent increase, so. The market's still continuing to go up, as far as cultivators, there's plenty of room for more and what will happen is the better products will survive. The market itself will choose and dictate. But again, the market's the entire state and eventually it will be national. I have no doubts in that. So I wouldn't look at manufacturing companies and cultivators that in direct competition locally. That should be retailers and delivery operator concerns. As far as delivery operators, again. We want to go across the state and set up another location, we're already looking at another place in Adams. Which is on the exact opposite corner of the state, we're hoping to come into the middle. Because though Worcester is extremely saturated with delivery currently. But I wouldn't look at it as being in direct competition, if anything. As a delivery operator, we would want to sell their products too. It's not about selling your own products, it's about selling what the consumer wants when you're a retailer. Not just your own, so Dank Delivery, operating independent of the cultivator in Turf Factory. As well as Candy Factory would be looking to purchase from them, so we would, that company would actually be an asset to them to have nearby. And again, the market will.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm good with.
Mr. Bessie.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a lot of questions, I think we can, this is, this is my wheelhouse, I know a lot about this industry and. So some of the things that, you know, before I could even begin to think about. If it's good, not good. I need to see business plans, I'd like to see, you know, a breakdown of your pro forma, you, you, you stated that you feel that each one of your businesses would. In the first, you know, full year would, you know, would grow somewhere around four million dollars per facility.
Each license is very different.
So I, I just, I would just love to see how you came to your formulation on those numbers. You know, I really want to see a breakdown of how each business will operate, you know, the, the security plans. You know. Any, any, anything that would help me as someone who really understands the industry. Would really separate you from another operator that might want to have an agreement with us here in town, what's gonna make you stand out? You know, so I, I support the industry, I think it's, I think it's good, but I also don't want to just have. Another person come in and be another business, I want, I want a business that has a sound plan that isn't gonna be gone in, you know, two years. Cause we know it's expensive for you as an operator to come in and do it, but it's also, you know, a, a risk and an investment from the town's perspective to make sure that what we're bringing in is going to. Bring in, you know, revenue for, for the town because at the end of the day, revenue is one of, is important and that's why I really want to understand. Financially where you're coming from, so I would just like to see all of that before I even. Begin to kind of dig in, cause I'll probably have a ton of questions once I see all the other plans. So right now, I would just love to see as much as you can get in front of us from a, you know, a, a paper perspective so that I can read through it and really make some informed questions and, you know, eventually in, informed yes or no.
Okay, I can absolutely provide a detailed pro forma for each business plan as well as the business plan, I would ask that you don't hand my pro forma out. The Excel sheet I will provide for the board members as well as detailed business plans in all twenty-one of the operating plans respectively. That the CC looks for. Basically a complete application packet I'll put in front of you. Again, if I can. The sooner we can get a date scheduled, I want to make sure if it's gonna be sooner than later that I get you them. However, it, I can get them to you relatively quickly at this point.
This words. You're muted again. There you go.
I just need a little bit of clarification, so I'm looking at these four plans, one is a cultivation plan. Two are manufacturer plans, one is a delivery plan, so I'm assuming that your manufacturing businesses are also retail, is that correct?
No.
No.
You know.
A manufacturing license only gives you the ability to process marijuana into various different items. For instance, breaking down bud, trimming it into smaller flower, trimming the leaves and such, breaking it into pre-rolls, that's not considered processing it.
So let me, I, I'm good with that. The question, the reason I'm looking for this, and then you have a delivery company, you said something about. A few minutes ago about you'd probably even be delivering stuff from the company that would not be your competition and near you. And so I'm asking, are you gonna be a distributor? What's the, what's the, what's the?
A delivery operator, so there's two, there's two different types of delivery licenses and then there's transportation licenses. There's the, transportation license allows a company to move it from licensed facility to licensed facility, not to the consumer. And they do not sell the product, they're getting paid for the transportation. Existing transport licensee is the same thing, except they have a different license as well. The types of delivery licenses are a delivery operator and a, and a courier. A delivery operator is a marijuana company that is more like an Amazon store, they have a warehouse and they sell directly to the consumer. And they cannot buy from other retailers, but like other retailers can buy from other retailers, a delivery operator cannot. A marijuana courier gets paid for making the delivery. They don't actually sell the product, they pick it up, already packaged, they deliver it and they get a, a service. And then there is one other type of delivery to the consumer at home, which is a delivery endorsement which attaches to a retail license. We would be the delivery operator, so we want to deliver directly to the consumers, but that company being a warehouse store has to buy wholesale from people like a micro business, so.
Very familiar with that model, I'm very familiar with that model, I grew a model in the communications and computing industry, so. When you started talking, I needed to make sure what you were talking about and you're talking about distribution.
Yes, as a, as a delivery operator, the, the other three licenses wouldn't be distributing other than wholesale.
I'll set this words.
I'm good, thank you.
I think you're, you have your mashing orders to get back to us with a much more detail, I'm surprised really we didn't get it in the first place, I have to check with Mr. Buckland to see what he might have and not have. I have one question for Mr. Sullivan, I'll just up and finish up, Derek, you know what our. Growth is as far as the marijuana companies from about three years ago to today, I know there's been a huge drop off with all the increased competition throughout the state.
Yeah, well, you're, you're, two things, the host agreements who are, are about to become major issues with the legislation, so that's where. Host agreements are where non-retails, where the town would. Reimburse for its expenses if you will, so. There's no, when you look at it essentially, there's, there's no longer going to be what used to have for the revenues. Agreement outside of the excise. If the. You know, it's, so the benefits of the community are more in the line of if it's vacant property being, being renovated or, or jobs. You wouldn't really see much in the way of any excise outside of the normal.
Well, I would propose. And hopefully my client agrees with me. That there's another way to give the town the same benefit. And that is for us to create a trust that we're obligated to put the three percent in for the benefit of the town, however the town feel deems necessary. We could do that, I could have that drafted up a proposal for that, something what that would look like. And accomplish the same task, then the town would also step outside of the confusion of. The three percent in the, these, these agreements and all that issue that's coming down the road as Mr. Sullivan correctly points out, it's gonna become an issue, well. There's the option, why don't we get rid of that language in these agreements and changing language where we're required to put it in trust? And then three percent each year, the town can do what it wants with it, we'd be contractually obligated to fund it and you would no longer have that issue with the. The impact fees, you still get the benefit out of it.
Interesting.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
The problems we have.
I'll include a draft, I'll, I'll include a draft of the operating plans and the business plan, just so you can get an idea of what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think that'd be beneficial, thank you.
Yeah, we would like to review that to get a legal opinion. We are, we already know through the Cannabis Control Commission that the host agreements basically voided out after eight years with the, with their latest decisions. And they're reviewing every host agreement that comes forward, they're also going back on older ones also. So as far as host agreements go, it's becoming a very nebulous situation overall. I'm not sure what you're proposing will actually pass muster with them either. And as we know, it takes a year to maybe two years to get approval on anything lately, but as I said, right now, we do have voted by town meeting, etc., we have a, a limit of three delivery operators and we have three in town now. And there's just no way to get around.
I don't think that's the same delivery operator license we're looking for, we had one for that cycle license and we pulled it. Delivery operator. In the second paragraph it says. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let me finish, all I'm saying is right now, I spoke with Mr. Buckland, we have three, that's our limit, we aren't sure whether to get off anymore at this time. That's a decision we have to make as well. It's just, it's where it's at right now. We have three retail, we have three delivery and as we all know, as far as manufacturing and as far as, you know, growing, there is no limit, the state has no rules, regulations. So it's very straightforward, there's always certain things, you know, that we have issues with and the biggest issue really is if we add more people in, how, how many people are gonna be left in the. Town of Wareham generating income for us when this all falls through and it, it falls out and we know probably within six months or less, the federal government's gonna come in and accept all of it. Cause they're gonna be looking for the money as well as everybody else and everything changes, you may have a, a grower ten states away supplying half the country. You know. Well, I expect the beer companies and the cigarette companies that are huge to come in and take over this whole industry eventually, so. It's, it's where it's going, it's the way it's gone in Canada. Well, it's, it's happening in Canada, so it's a preview what's happening, so if you can get that far, I appreciate it, I, I really. To do anything for next week, we have town meeting the week after, so Mr. Perry's ready, probably the week after town meeting will get you back on the agenda, but please get us everything you have. And do a pretty thorough job on to make it a little bit easier for us.
I, I will, sir, my, my operating plans are quite long and detailed. And just to your point about the muster of the, the, the trust. If we were to do an irrevocable trust prior to execution, dependent upon getting the host community agreements from the town. Then upon execution by the town, with, of the host community agreements, which would not have anything to do with the community impact fee. It would become irrevocable and not actually considered in the host community agreement and that would be something we'd be going to do as well.
Yeah, that's what we'd like to see, to see if we could actually do something like that, because if it links it all to the host agreement, it'll never get past the Cannabis Control Commission.
Absolutely, we, we had proposed this in Blackstone for another, for another retailer slash cultivator there and they were, they liked it, we ended up ultimately doing a different deal, but. I'm pretty sure it'll pass muster and I'll tell you, I will directly contact the CCC with an email to make sure, so I'm not wasting your time.
Get ahold of Matt, Matt Gencola, he's my friend over there. He's the one that takes the tux all about, but again, we've, we've spent a lot of time, we actually have the number three retail operation in the state, so we've, we've had this for quite a while.
Absolutely.
Appreciate the time and we'll, and we'll probably see you in about three weeks approximately. Thank you.
Three weeks, I'll plan to have it in a week for you.
That'll be fine, give us some time to look at it. You have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Have a good night, thank you.
Bye Bob. Okay, I don't think we have anything to do right now, Mr. Sullivan, do we have any more articles for approval, recommending? You're muted, oh, there you go.
Yeah, I can bring up real quick, see if I can.
Go ahead.
Share just something I've been. Working on, see if I can get this over as a. On the screen.
Fall town meeting, Articles Administration.
Just bring this forward, this is why I had for the capital plan that I've been bringing forward and just so, what I mentioned before, just so everybody understands, there is. We've met with the department, the DOR, the Division of Local Service Representatives in the last two weeks, it is. It is a little tough going with everything that is going on around the Commonwealth, getting the free cash certified this year, so. You know, always, always a little bit of a race, so. Most of these would fall off if there were no free cash, the only one I'd recommend going forward on, no matter what, is the, the streetlights, but let me run through them. The first one, which could continue on, that's the police department and every three years we lease vehicles for them through a capital lease. And just so everybody understands, a capital lease, at the end of it, we own them, so it's not a, not a turnback lease. So this is purchasing equipped seven vehicles. Why we say purchasing equipped, well, they need to be outfitted, whether it's lights, computers, etc. So there's seven vehicles, it would be, most likely the configuration is five cruisers, two unmarked. If we're all cruisers, we would have need, need a little bit more money, but you, you have in the annual capital budget for the police department within the budget lines, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's, so the three years, that's four hundred and fifty thousand, obviously a portion of that money would be the, the interest cost. Probably something around twenty thousand over the three years, so it would be a three-year capital lease with the lease payments in the annual Wareham PD budget. So we've already got the funding, this is really just to allow us to do the capital lease and make the payments over the next three years to be in their budget. The next one is the inspectional services vehicles, there's three two thousand and five Chevy pickups. You know, there, it's getting to the point where they are not passing inspection, we've welded some plates onto them and. You know, it's, it's time, so we're looking for three fuel efficient vehicles, so when I say fuel efficient. You know, they could be something similar to a small hybrid SUV or, or plug-in. Some of them could be fully electric, I could just try and look for the full configuration, I know the request was for a RAV four type hybrid electric, hybrid vehicle. And the, the request would be pay for that out of the FY23 certified free cash. And there's three two thousand and five pickups that we'd be replacing. Uh, municipal maintenance, that's to upgrade, repair and replace streetlights. We've already done, I think people didn't know this, we've already converted close to a thousand streetlights to LED out of the uh, almost seventeen hundred. This would take care of the remaining and uh, it would be, you know, it's close to about six hundred and sixty, six hundred and seventy. And some of the new ones that they're looking to do also start dimming at about ten PM and then during the nighttime, dim up to uh, thirty percent, which is to help with the uh, the, you know, we have some concerns about the animals and sleeping at night. So this is a new setup where they have a top where the uh, the sensors can automatically dim. We recommend getting those because even though they're a little bit more expensive, you can get about sixty thousand dollars worth of incentive credits back. So that alone would be about a hundred and eighty, I think about a hundred and eighty-three to a hundred and eighty-five thousand. And we potentially again could get upwards of seventy thousand in credits back, but you have to fund the whole thing. Because you, obviously you get the credits back and that goes back to the uh, general fund. And then the remainder, you can do some of the work on the period lights and such. Um, looking at it, the, the annual electricity savings uh, to today's rates are about forty to forty-three thousand dollars going forward. So you've got approximately after the incentives, about a two and a half year uh, payback period. So I think it makes a lot of sense to, to do that.
Anything else for capital? Well, that, this will be it for the article.
Yeah, this is uh, right now, for the, the article, we're, we're keeping things a little light with everything that the, the town has going on. You know, if you look at this, it would be, it'd be three hundred and twenty-five thousand. The uh, boilers to the high school bring us up to about one million, one hundred and twenty-five. That's eating a large portion up of uh, of free cash and uh, you know, that's, it's just a concern, so I'm holding back on some of our projects, so.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Tricia, you have any questions, Mr. Sullivan?
No, I don't, thank you.
Mr. Chadwick, any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Mr. Bessie, any questions, Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, just one on the uh, on line two, on the inspectional services. You have a cost of a hundred thousand dollars, is that a, is that a reasonable cost based on the request of, of inspectional services for the type of vehicle that they are asking for, or is this based on what you think would be the most reasonable use of the money?
Yeah, that's a good question. They had brought forward from the state list. Uh, it was Toyota RAV4 LE hybrids and they were just under twenty-nine thousand each. I've brought that up a little bit and uh, would also, just depending on maybe some matches we can get out of the uh, Commonwealth, depending on the type of vehicles. So I think this would get us right in there to actually purchase uh, three, three vehicles overall. You know, what we're looking for, so.
Okay.
I have no questions at all. So what I would do is I would ask uh, Tricia to make a motion for favorable action for Article One Capital Plan.
Who keeps muting me? I've got like five notices on my computer that I'm muted. Honest to God, it's like you're getting my Irish side. So, so I make a motion that we approve Article One for um, funding for FY23 cap, the Capital Plan.
Favorable action, correct?
Favorable action.
Thank you. Ms. Wirths?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. Anything else for us there? Okay.
Article two, I just wanted to show you what the transfers would look like right now. Plymouth County, we call it the OPEB Trust Fund, OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. Three hundred thousand, that's what we've been doing. We still need to modify that policy to, to reflect the three hundred thousand instead of, you know, the reminder of free cash, but I haven't heard anything against that, so I think we're, you know, we're okay with that. Stabilization Fund, a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the, just rewind real quick of the OPEB Trust Fund, we've got just under a million in that right now. I think it's uh, so I'd have to look at it, but the, the amount, so it's uh, that's, that's invested a little bit more aggressively, we've had high rates of returns, but obviously uh, you know, you're probably in one of those cycles where you don't want to look at your uh, statement and wait for the uh, next one to come in. So I think what everybody's doing with their 401Ks now, so. Uh, stabilization fund, we have just, just about four and a half million in there. If you look at it, probably by FY24, our budget at the end of it, including the state and county assessments and upper Cape Cod Tech, we should be just under eighty million. So it used to be you wanted three to five percent. They tell you at some point, you're look, going to be looking at eight to five percent of your budget in your, in your stabilization fund. But right now, at um, if we give an eighty million dollar valuation, we're, we're just, you know, we're a little under six percent. We're in the five percent range, so I'd say put about a hundred and fifty thousand into there and we're finally starting to get some sort of quality return, uh, rate of return. Because stabilization fund, you can't fit in any sort of mutual funds or anything, it has to be in a fixed class. And now you're finally getting over one percent, just, you know, as interest rate, so does, so the bank rate, so. I'd put it about two hundred thousand, which keeps us, as every year with the budget increases, you, you keep in line with that. Uh, emergency management, bring that up to a hundred thousand and that's uh, you know, that's for any time there's any sort of emergency or setting things up. We've actually um, started putting up an emergency management uh, center in the temporarily up in uh, in the multi-service center with some, some donated items from uh, from Eastern Bank, which has been great. The uh, a lot of our emergency management personnel, including uh, including uh, Wareham Fire and the, the, to fire have been helping out with that because it's uh, at some point, you need a command center if uh, if something's happening, so that's one of the things, have that up and running till we have a more permanent home. Um, obviously that hundred, a hundred thousand's not going towards that whole thing, but you know, well, it was uh, if you remember, former Chief McDuffie sat me down, it was a few years ago, I remember him saying, what are you going to do when there's an emergency? Are you guys saying I have to go to town meeting or we can't pay for that? You don't have funding. And I always thought, you know, that's right, put some money aside and we, you never wor, when the time comes, you don't worry about the dollars, you just worry about getting people taken care of, so. Uh, derelict and tax title properties, setting a hundred thousand aside for that as well. So this is one of the things, you know, people, I don't think realize, we don't have a big um, big finance committee reserve and in other towns, you can see it can be up to, it can be several hundred thousand dollars. Ours is really small, so when we've got an emergency or we're cleaning up some of these properties, I'm depleting the municipal maintenance budget, which means they can't do other things. It's even getting uh, whether it's surveys or having somebody clean up or do anything, this is, so this is really an investment back in cleaning up the community. And then the general insurance budget line. Um, although we're in the last year of the agreement where they were not raising more than two and a half percent. You got the final, the final uh, don't want to say hit, but the full cost of the, of the new school. And with not um, losing the, the DECA school off of the, the rolls altogether, it was a ninety-six thousand dollar increase. So uh, we've, we had some room in there, but I'd like to transfer this into the line and get, make sure it's getting taken care of. And so we can pay some deductibles if we have claims come in as well.
Is this, are you satisfied with this? Or you're going to change it some more before the town meeting?
Um, this is where on that right now, I don't see uh, some of the, we don't, if you remember, there was um, unemployment insurance, we still have over four hundred thousand set aside in there. Last year, we spent about uh, well, had to pay about two hundred and twenty thousand in unemployment. So we can go another year without having to put funds in there. Next year, I definitely recommend that we uh, we put some more money in. Uh, the collective bargaining reserve, we've already set um, some money aside before. Uh, we are getting to the point where we're a little behind on some of the contracts, I think we'll get about two more in this session. So I've been going back and forth on uh, what, whether to set more reserves or if I feel we'll take care of most of it, but most of them by April. So I would ask that we vote on this and that's possibly the only one where just depending on how, how conservative I, I feel, gonna start feeling from that cost, so.
Thank you. This is worth any questions, Mr. Sullivan?
She nodded her head no.
Okay.
Well, I unmuted myself and said no, and then it muted me again while I was saying no, so. Playing with my mute button, I'm gonna get them and get their mute button, boy.
We're gonna buy you a new computer, that's what we're gonna do. Mr. Chadwick, any questions, Mr. Sullivan?
None.
Mr. Bessie, any questions?
Uh, none.
Okay, I have no questions for Mr. Sullivan though. Uh, this was, let's uh, make them, if you give us a motion for favorable action for Article Two.
So I make a motion that we vote favorably for Article Two Transfer of Free Cash.
Thank you. This is worth.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. Anything else there? You're muted.
I'm assuming you voted the peg access already for favorable.
I thought we voted for that last week, but it's not on my master's list, it's being voted on.
Okay, I don't know if you want to take action on it, that's the amount and it's just a uh, according to Mr. Underhouse, so I think we should.
If we haven't done this, just do it anyways, just in case. This is worth, will you please make a, a motion for favorable action for Article Four?
Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Perfect. I make a motion for a favorable vote for Article Four, the Peg Access Receipts Article.
Second.
Thank you both. This is worth.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. Okay, girls, does there?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, I believe Mr. Sullivan has a piece of the forty-eight hours that he brought up and sent me about a, a request for signs.
Yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, I was going to see if I could uh, bring it up, but that, that signs, if I remember, it was sideways and I couldn't really.
Yes, that's what it was sideways, so.
Yes, they have sideways signs, very easy to read.
So it's the uh, it's for uh, the nine eight eight number, which is the suicide and crisis hotline, that's which I believe has gone uh, national as well, but it's within the Commonwealth. We were requested to put some signs up around town, one specifically at the library and two other locations and uh, you know, they asked for the maximum time, which my understanding is thirty days. So I, I'd like to see if the board is favorable. Um, you know, it's just, I don't think, obviously, all of us know and it's been drilled into us that when you have an emergency, dial nine one one for, you know, please help. But there's, you know, with mental health help and being crises, this is the number to dial in, in that case. I think it's not known yet and it would be really good for us to help get that out.
Yeah, I think uh, because we're coming into the holiday season, unfortunately uh, suicides actually take a fairly good rise between Thanksgiving and New Year's actually, so uh, I would ask if, unless the board has any uh, questions that we make a motion to allow the signs. I'm sorry, Chad, but go ahead.
Um, I, I have one question in one favor, um, can we uh, make sure one of the signs is placed near or around the schools? As, you know, youth, youth suicide is, is climbing in the US, so I, I would like to have that really clear and visual for them as well.
I would agree, and even back on the fire station, I would actually, if you have Mr. Worth making a motion to allow up to ten signs at Mr. Sullivan's discretion aware, uh, and allow him to be up for at least through the, the first of the year.
Make a motion, I make a motion that we um, vote to uh, to fund and, and, and acquire at least ten nine eight eight signs to be put up around the town at Mr. Sullivan's discretion.
And allow him to be up for the first of January.
And allow them to be up at least through the first of January.
Second.
Any discussion on that at all? I heard this is worth.
I vote yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you very much for bringing it up there.
But thank you for consideration, I really appreciate it.
Uh, it's important to do. Uh, Mr. Sullivan, you have a report for us or are you all set?
Good God, no.
That's usually my line. Okay, uh, initiative reports, Mrs. Worth, anything for today?
Nothing, please.
Mr. Chadwick?
No.
Mr. Bessie?
Let me pull out my stack of papers, no, nothing.
And I'm going to give everybody a treat, I, we worked all day today, brainstorming with the Mass Municipal Association for the coming year for legislative events. I'm not going to waste any time, I'll get back to you later, I have nothing, which is very rare. And we have uh, agenda, so I will make a motion to adjourn, folks.
I'll second that.
We could all vote together.
Yes.
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 And we're gonna buy you a magic button, this is worth for uh, mute, no mute. I apologize for not making some of that stuff clear enough for you, my fault, not yours. Take care, Wareham, have a good day, have a good night.